Oh.
While you sign up at the.
I think we'll try.
Just.
This meeting's ordered, and we'll start with the pledges. Pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America. And a super republic which stands for the nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, appointed beneath the feet of Texas. One say, under God, one and indivisible. And Pastor McAdams has been kind enough to join us tonight, and he is going to bless our meeting.
Father, we come before you tonight, we thank you, God. Thank you for the people of Levelland, and we thank you for its leaders. God, we thank you for this council, God, and we ask, Lord, that you would give them wisdom and discernment. So, God, we ask that you'd help them to see beyond the here and now, Father, and help them to see down the road, God. Give them wisdom and discernment on how to handle the abundance. Father, how to handle the, the lack. And, God, we ask, Lord, that you would give them wisdom in each and every decision, God, that he would honor you. They would bless the people of Levelland, God. We ask, Lord, that you'd give them the courage to make the hard decisions. God, that you'd help them, Father, not to settle for quick fixes, God, but to look down the road and see what is needed, God, and to make those decisions with courage and with fortitude. And we ask, Lord, that you'd protect those that defend us and protect us. God, that your hand would rest upon them, Father, and give them wisdom, God, and that they would work together well. Good communication, Father. We ask, Lord, that your hand would rest upon them and protect them. And, God, we do ask for an abundance for Levelland. You're the giver of all good things, so, Father, we ask you for an abundance, Father, an abundance and a blessing upon the businesses of Levelland, upon the homes in Levelland, Father. God, we ask, Lord, for good tax revenues, God, so that things can be taken care of. God, we ask that you would bless the workers of the city, Father, that they would use their time well. God, that they would use their resources well, God, that things would be fixed and remain fixed. Father, we thank you that you are the one that gives good blessings, God. We ask, Father, Lord, for your provision and your abundance, and, God, we ask, Father, that you would cause us to be in a place of harmony with each other and with you. And that, Father, we would walk in togetherness, Father, walk in unity, Father, but uncompromising. God, we ask, Lord, that you would give us the courage to devote ourselves to you and to each other, and Jesus and.
Thank you, Pastor McAdams. May we have a lunch for Kevin. Please forgive me for walking in there. We always say. I'm sorry. I hope you enjoyed the birthday party.
Thank you. I'm glad to be expected.
And we have a statement by citizens. Mr. Ryan Crutcher is going to speak with us tonight. Mr. Crutcher, if you'd just please stay with stating your address. And, um, so you know, we have three minutes for you to, you to speak. Thank you for coming.
Uh, my name is Ryan Crutcher. I live at thirty-nine sixty West State Road, Levelland, Texas. Uh, I'm a firefighter here with the fire department. I was, I've been on the department about a year and a half volunteering, and then I worked about a half, about six months or so as a part-time. And then got hired on full-time in, uh, in June. And so it has been a lifelong dream of mine to be a paid firefighter and, uh, just feel very blessed to have the opportunity to, uh, to work for the, our citizens here in Levelland. Um, but the reason I'm here tonight is I wanted to come by and thank y'all personally for, uh, sending us to training last month. So, uh, the second weekend, July, uh, we got to go to Teaks, which is there in College Station, and got to spend a week down there doing training. And Derek Lewis and I, uh, were in, uh, the high angle rescue class, and here's some, here's some pictures. And so there, there's three different, uh, there's three different things for, for rope rescue. One is. Uh, the second is, uh, awareness and operations, and then this class that we did here, the forty-hour class that we did here, uh, was, uh, our tech, our technician class, which is finished up our, our rope rescue. So Derek and I had gone before and got our intro and, and awareness and operations and, and got to finish up, uh, our, our technician, uh, certification that week. Uh, Andy, uh, Andy also went and Michael Palmer went, and, uh, they did auto extrication and got to spend, uh, forty hours down there doing that. And man, Teaks is really, really unique in the fact that it, it brings people from all over. Uh, there were some guys from Spain there. I've been to trainings with guys from Finland, so, I mean, it's really, um, you know, and, and. And in our line of work, it's a, it's an ever-changing evolution, and so there's always new training coming out. And I just thank y'all so much for sending us down there and paying for our meals and paying for our hotels. Uh, that investment, um, was a very good investment in us. And so I just wanted to take my ti- take the time to, to thank y'all personally for sending us.
Thank you, Mr. Crutcher.
For here. Appreciate that.
Y'all have a lot of fun doing budgets.
We will try. Sure. All right, and now I think we will just dive on in. Turn the floor over to Mr. Fisher.
But, uh, y'all were presenting.
Yeah, it oops.
This is my first budget, so just pick y'all and go from there. We are, uh, tonight gonna primarily look at the enterprise fund. Um, we're still piecing all of this together. Um, I don't like being in this situation. Y'all probably heard me say that more than once. Uh, but we've been playing catch-up on a lot of different arenas, and Storm didn't do us any favors by throwing a curveball in there, but we are, are getting all of this together so that we can give y'all some information and we make some decisions. We might need to add a budget session or two in August just to get more comfortable, uh, before we actually consider adopting this. I tried to convince PD to just, uh, surrender their budget, free up a few dollars, and they weren't keen on that idea. So, um, we are where we are, but tonight we're gonna look at our enterprise fund and if y'all will recall, does I have a clicker? Are you gonna, you gonna do it?
Okay, we don't have enough USB ports for the clicker.
That's okay. I've stressed you enough for a day, so I'm not gonna do any of the, uh, if y'all, enterprise funds, um, are our business funds. And they, they get kind of misleading because ideally, uh, you want to make a profit in these, but it's not profit in what you think in the private sector. It's profit in that generating funds to invest back into various enterprise funds. But we're also generating revenue that we transfer back into the general fund. It helps, uh, with tax rate keeping low. But it also helps in keeping, when, when I or other general fund employees work inside an enterprise fund, we don't have to go in there and try to keep up to the very nth detail of what we did and how we did it. We, we, back and forth. Next slide, and again, just reminding on the goals of our budget. I am stressed.
You haven't stressed me. I've been getting a chance to practice this, so. Okay.
Okay. So, uh, our number one goal is maintain our physical responsibility. If we invest in our employees, and again, uh, in middle of this year, we're gonna be looking at a, a three percent increase. We will be, um, after budget, be sitting down and having a discussion on a compensation analysis to see where we sit in the market, what we need to be doing, uh, take care of our employees, you know. If we take care of them, they'll take care of our community, and, uh, we know we can't, um, again, pay what Lubbock pays, but we have to be very aware of what Lubbock is doing because, um, you can't blame our employees if they can drive twenty-five miles down the road and make significantly more. Uh, our challenge, uh, is to create the work culture, create the work community, um, that they won't find anywhere else, that they want to be here, and we will be working on doing that. Um, and our employees and our budget is provide for a safe, welcoming, and resilient community, enhance our quality of life, improve our infrastructure, uh, invest in our residential and commercial economic vitality, um, responsive and innovative and accountable city government. I mean, this, again, look for better ways to do things, a little bit more efficient, but look for better ways to take care of our community. Our guidelines that we talked about last time, priorities, again, being physically responsible. Do the items align with the city council's goals and objectives and vision, which we'll be visiting those this fall. Uh, are we being efficient and innovative? Are we being clear in our message, and is it understandable? Uh, are we investing in our employees financially, professionally, and educationally? And as we look at our capital items, uh, these are questions that we ask. What is the total cost? Why is it needed? How will it benefit the department, organization, community? What are the ongoing continuous costs, especially personnel? That is a cost we will incur here. Any special training, certifications, personnel required, uh, lead time for ordering, shipping, and receiving, and what happens if we don't fund this? What, what changes? I think too many times, especially during budget, and rightfully so, council will want to make adjustments to try to make things work in, and we fail as a staff to come back and say, okay, if we do make this adjustment, this service or this item might be affected. Um, so, okay, enterprise fund revenue. Our enterprise fund, uh, is made up of five different accounts. Uh, our water fund, which is approximately thirty-eight percent of the, uh, enterprise fund revenues there. FY twenty-four, we have almost three million dollars projected in revenue. Um, one of the things, and you'll be seeing this, um, when it comes before y'all on August fifth, is our, uh, water conservation plan. And it's the reason I gave you the rate sheets. One of the things I'm gonna be requesting, uh, within our water rate structure is right now, our, uh, the way our water rates read that anything above three thousand and one gallons to infinity is one rate structure. What I'm wanting to do is requesting is at twenty thousand, we add a new rate structure, basically just the same increment of going at twenty thousand and one gallons and up, it, it would change to four dollars per di-. Part of the reason in this is to get people to conserve, but the other part of the reason is if we continue to use water without thinking about the long-term ramifications, we're gonna have to invest more into our system, uh, to secure water, uh, and, and provide for water as well. So you'll be seeing that in our water conservation plan. You'll also be seeing that, uh, within our rate structure, and another thing, I'm gonna do a little sidebar here quick. If you look at this rate sheet, uh, that is in front of you, have it. We noticed when we were looking at this, um, that there's some things in here that really aren't clear, so you may see some housekeeping, uh, items in here to, um, help it make a little more sense, and, and I'm gonna point you directly to the middle where it's green, it says monthly sewer rates. Uh, if you'll see this, it says residential, and inside the city limits is seventeen dollars and twenty-nine cents for availability, plus twelve cents per thousand gallons for the first ten thousand. After that, everything's free. I don't think that's what we intended, so we're trying to figure out what was intended when that was there so we can clean this up and make it make sense, and you'll see the same thing, uh, on all the categories in here. It's just after ten thousand gallons, you get it for free. Um, yeah, we're not, uh, using this as a revenue generator, but we're losing money in, in how we're providing services, so those items we will.
We have a lot of users that are using the ten thousand gallons.
Average residential is between about twelve and twenty, so you're probably pretty close in the same thing, uh, with wastewater, and then when you add in your, um, non-residential, they're using a lot more than that, and so we are having some challenges there, so we just need to clean that up so it makes a little bit more sense. It might be that it should have read seventeen twenty-nine for the first ten thousand gallons, and everything above that is twelve cents per thousand. I, I don't know. There's, we're trying to see if we can find that out and, and make sense of it. In your enterprise fund wastewater, again, this is the last year of the six-dollar increase for sewer, uh, improvement fund. Uh, our new, uh, wastewater treatment plant will be coming onboard FY twenty-six. We should be breaking ground probably winter time. And sanitation, and approximately thirty percent of our, uh, enterprise fund revenue is from, uh, our sanitation. And per our contract, they're asking for a three-point-five percent increase, and these, if council grants this, which we really can't deny, it's in the contract. Um, these rates would be, in effect, through twenty-sixth or October one of twenty-six. Our swimming pool is part of our enterprise fund. I do not know a swimming pool anywhere that generates revenue. They usually cost more than they.
Quality of life.
Yeah, and streetlights, this is more of a pass-through item. XL charges us for streetlight. People are surprised when I tell them, because they ask, why do I have a streetlight fee? And I'm like, because XL charges us for those streetlights? Well, I thought my taxes covered those streetlights, and they don't. Um, so that's the reason it's there. I think, uh, last time I looked, we spend close to sixteen thousand a month just in streetlights, so. It's an expensive item, but it's an important item. Um, these next couple of slides are, uh, you'll see them. They're from Freezing Nichols. Our water, uh, infrastructure plan that was done.
No, I was gonna get some tea.
You were walking straight at me, and I didn't know what you were doing.
The first item, uh, that's in our infrastructure is our citywide AMI program. Uh, I think we started this, uh, council member McKay, before you came onboard. Uh, we are working with Amoresco, a company, at looking at changing out all of our water meters, uh, into a uh, program that'll be wireless, that our meters will can communicate directly, uh, with the city. Uh, it will help us in, uh, human error in inputting information. It will also, uh, give us information, uh, and the customer information immediately of how much are they using, and if you're on vacation, you can set alerts to let it, let you know if, um, you know, there's excessive water use going on, or if, uh, another person may be coming over and using your water.
Stealing my water.
While you're gone, uh, so we're still working through that program with them. We're hoping to have something, uh, early September. Um, they will also, uh, conduct our lead and copper survey, which is an EPA requirement that we inspect every meter in town to determine whether or not if the service lines, what they are made of. Are they lead? They galvanized? Are they plastic? Are they flexed? We, we have to do an inventory of all of that. Um, the other items within our water system that we've got to be looking at is the twelve-inch, uh, Hickory Street to the airport supply line. This just brings the well that is sitting out there potentially online. Park Hill is free, uh, refreshing their numbers, and that's something that, um, we will be going to the region O of the Texas Water Development Board, which we are a member of, but we don't have any information in there about Levelland's water system that we can go and get added to that and then request funding through them, and a lot of their loans are combinations of grants and loans, and most of their loans are at zero percent interest.
And I believe we've never done that before.
I mean, we are, we are not even listed in the regional plan, and we need to be, because it is another source of funding, uh, for us. And part of the reason why it's, um, zero percent, because when, um, the state put it out there in constitutional amendment, creating funds for water projects within the state, this is where, uh, those dollars are coming from, so. Uh, and I think the state's making a whole lot more on interest bundling all that money in one spot than, um, we would probably pay. Another item in here is a proposed, uh, elevated storage tank. Joe, if I'm correct, this is out at the rail park.
Yes, sir, for the east of town.
For the east of town, which would help stabilize our system, add pressure to it. I know one time, as we said, we looked at the rail park, um. I don't think the EDC was too crazy about having a water tower out there, but I think it could be a, a nice uh, identifier that you're coming in, uh, to Levelland. Uh, I know that's an expensive identifier, but it serves more than that. It helps our water system, uh, maintain its security and maintain its integrity. So it's one of those items we've got to look at as well. Um, the other two items, the twelve-inch, uh, state highway line, that's in support of that water tower.
Or that water tower looped all in.
Okay. And a loop system keeps our water fresh, keeps it clean. Uh, we have some time, we just had last week where someone called about their water was cloudy, and that's because they're on a line that, you know, re- requires us to go out and flush it. So we keep our lines looped, and the water is moving through there, and it doesn't, um, get stale or funny looking. We continue to do our valve and hydrant program and water line replacement. Um, the next slide on water line replacement. In, in some of this, we will probably talk more in depth, uh, when we can sit down with, with council and have our retreat and do some really long-range planning.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
He started going, there you go. Get him out of his own.
As you can see, we've got a lot of water lines to replace, and this is the hard, these are the hard items that when it comes time to funding, because these aren't the pretty projects. These aren't the things that you get to see every day. All you see is torn-up roads, construction, and, and then the stuff goes down in the ground, and nobody wants to do it. But the city has, has got to begin this program of replacing our lines and taking care of our lines, and, and it is something that, again, we talk about enterprise fund, that's what some of those dollars, uh, help us with as, as we go through, is to replace lines and take care of stuff. But we need to have a serious conversation about creating, um, a true program, very similar to building a wastewater plant, but creating something to where, um, potentially we may have a water improvement fee that actually helps pay to replace these lines as we move older. As y'all all aware, that, you know, we'll be celebrating our hundredth anniversary in two years, and some of these lines have been in the ground for a very long time, so we need to get in there and, and take care of them. Wastewater, uh, the big item on here is our wastewater treatment plant, which, uh, we're way down the road on improvement on these of, uh, getting this project moving forward. Again, we're hoping to be breaking ground early twenty-five, and then it'll take about a year to eighteen months to, uh, completely get this project, um, moving forward. Um, and these other items, the gentry lift station and the upsides of A and M Lane Gravity Main. I'm trying to think of those, but with a.
I know, I know. Sprintery lift station is what, from the gentry area right behind where the colleges purchase all that area right there on Clubview Drive. Uh, at some point, they're gonna extend all the, probably all the way to the end, and that's, lift station carries probably maybe a quarter of the end of those buildings and drops into there, so, or if there's ever gonna be a expansion or, uh, any type of, uh, development behind, uh, where the credit union now stands, that line is gonna have to be upsized, and that lift station has to be upsized.
And this, uh, inspection and cleaning of the Lobel Lake line, I think we learned a lot about this line during our storm of how well it works, how well it doesn't work. I think we figured out we had two lines going into one line, and.
Yes.
So we probably need to do something on it somewhere down the road as well.
Right, that requires a lot of man-hours of just maintaining that and just managing it. I saw from an outsider looking in going, it's been on long enough, we should turn the other one on, and.
Oh, this one actually is the one, uh, right there beside the chamber. It's a gravity main. Uh, we have a large at fifteen-inch, and we always have to maintain that as far as, uh, jetting it out. Factoring it out, just because going underneath on Avenue H, there is a storm drain pipe from the tech dock. And to go for gravity, they had to go underneath it, so, you know, with the weight of that and the weight of the, the aging infrastructure, of course, and the ground shifting all the time is starting to settle. So that's why we need to go ahead and clean it out and, and maintain that, so.
Managed it well during the storm, though.
Um, very similar to the water line replacement. We've got to look at this and, and implement this plan as we talked about when Freezing Nichols did a overview of this. Um, the longer we wait, the more expensive this gets. It doesn't go away. Uh, it's very critical that we, we figure this out, but we've got to tie our wastewater and water projects into our three projects as well. I don't want to go in and repair a street and then go in and rip it up and put in new lines, so, um, those three projects are gonna require some planning and some oversight, uh, of how we can coordinate and move these, uh, forward so that we, we can be mindful, that we go back to the goals of being physically responsible with our dollars, that we, uh, take care of these, these projects. Again, these are the ugly ones that go underground, and nobody likes them until they can't get water or until, um, their sewer is backing up, and they're not happy about that, so. Questions on these so far? Jumped over water department. Maybe it just doesn't like you. Okay, well, um.
You have it?
Yeah, we have it.
They have it. You don't have it. I don't know where it went up there, but it's okay.
Yeah, that's next, and we'll be ready.
Um, our water department, as y'all well know, that, uh, building got hit pretty hard. You know, we're in the process of getting it repaired right now. Um, probably should be done in the next couple of weeks, you think? So the guys will be moving in there, um, to go back. So, uh, some of the things that you saw on here, um, probably being taken care of. Uh, the only thing we don't have is we still have them in two different places. Uh, actually, it worked to our advantage of having them in two different places, because when water department got taken out, we still had another spot for them to go and continue to operate, so, uh, we'll just need to continue to look at that.
The picture that you're seeing is not.
That's the Hickory.
Relevant, yeah.
Gotcha.
Trying to confuse you. That's what Freezing Nichols put in there, and it confused me when I first saw it. Um, old water tower. Um, Joe and I, Joe refers to this, so if you ever hear it, the witch's hat.
See that?
So um, I hadn't heard that term in a long time. So when he said it, I had to stop and kind of look at him. We need to figure out what to do with this thing and it'd be interesting to hear y'all's thoughts. Um.
We currently utilize it at all? No. Okay. There's no water in it. Okay.
It's just there.
Okay. Really?
We have several people that are, have, have antennas on that structure. They lease space on that, correct?
Yes, we.
Does the internet service and?
Price broadband has a tech utilizes, there's MASMnet and things like that. Uh, but as far as leasing, we're, we're just now getting to leasing. So.
There's the guy that came and did the presentation. Independent guy.
Remember the gentleman, I remember that. I didn't know he had an antenna on that tower.
I don't think it's on that tower yet. I think it's on Lee Street right now and he was going to potentially span.
I think anyone's on this one.
We had a company that, well, since I've came on board, it's been asking to come onto that and I've been putting them off. And then after the storm, I told them, we're not even going to have a discussion until we decide what to do.
Is it structurally stable? Debatable?
Well, yes and no. Uh, water towers, especially these older water towers were made to hold weight. So uh, right now, since it has no water.
It's more unsafe.
It's more un- unstable. Yes, structurally unstable.
Will we ever use it to put water in again?
No, sir.
Does it leak? Like if you put water in it, would it leak?
Yes, this is like, really, these are one of the older towers. And if you notice under the witch's hat, what I call it, the top, it's open.
Yes, have noticed that.
And things like that could get into that stuff. That's why we stopped utilizing that and that, but that's one of our original water towers here for the city of Loveland. So uh, back uh, what, five, six years ago, we proposed of possibly tearing it down or actually renovating it. Um, I think the cost is about the same. So it's either if we want it or if we don't want it, we have not done the study right now of how much it would cost.
To renovate or just tear it down.
If it's that expensive to just keep it up there for the sake of keeping it up there, we're eventually, it's eventually going to have to come down. So are you just throwing money at it just, just to have it there to look at?
If we renovate it and, and you know, paint it to the original color, the steel gray, I don't know if you'll remember.
Be able to use it as a water tower then?
Usually as, not a, as a water tower, but maybe just like a, maybe historic, our first water tower. That's where our first uh, water well is, was, and that's actually where our first fire department back.
The paint color relevant?
Not really.
Okay. Okay. It is iconic. People do take pictures of it a lot and use it in things here, here in town and but God, I, I don't want to uh, keep it up just so we don't tear it down either. No, but we could never utilize it in our current water system. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Well, that's kind of a bottom liner for me. Then we could never use it in our current water system.
What kind of dollars are you talking about to renovate it to?
Uh, we'd have to look it up again.
Millions, hundred thousand. Okay, okay, good. Okay. It says not that much to tear down too.
But then those people that tear down water towers or tear down any buildings or anything like that, large metal buildings, they uh, take the scrap and put it against that too. So uh.
I wonder if there is a way you could do both. You could um.
Take a picture of it and tear it down.
You could tear it down and maybe keep the top and somehow mount the top, the witch's hat per se top on the, on the bottom and use that as some kind of a art piece or, or historical piece there, you know, but you took it down. So you're not worried about it falling down and, and doing any kind of a damage, but you maintain some kind of the history of it there in the iconicness. That might never work. I just wonder if you could.
It may. Spot in the city park.
Yes. I mean, you could put it somewhere else, maybe. Might not be possible when it came down.
And it may be more expensive to renovate, tear it down and move it.
Yes.
Might just have to look into it.
Find us all the ideas.
Especially with today's dollars.
Oh, yeah.
I'd say this should get a cost, what it costs if you can tear it down or fix it.
It's the biggest thing, if we are going to fix it and renovate it, as I mentioned earlier, they're made to carry weight. So we'd have to
Sand it.
Yeah, put sand up there somehow with an elevator or something. I don't know.
So it doesn't collapse. Got it. It did make it through the storm.
It did. I was very nervous about that.
Never thought of it until right now, but goodness.
And there's people that will say, you know, leaving alone others, when you tear it down, that's when they'll be upset. Uh, but that is an ideal that you threw up and maybe we can, if we do tear it down, save the bonnet and stuff to maybe utilize somewhere.
He had our new swimming pool. I don't know.
We did skip the swimming pool.
We'll come back to it. If, you know, who knows where it is in the slides since there's other things aren't, aren't going up the way they're supposed to. Uh, water department has requested a new backhoe this year, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. You know, those things do a little bit of any and everything. It's, it's really the only thing that they have requested this year. Did I miss anything? Do you know it?
There was the, the saw cut through the asphalt.
Asphalt saw.
That's streets.
Not water. Okay.
Could we just fight through this fucking, would it help that they're cutting through to get the water line?
Oh, sir. We're trying to encourage our departments to uh, put things into proper line items and not
Move them.
Um, look for the line item that has the most availability in it and move it there. So.
I get you.
I don't need you encouraging them to go back the other direction, sir.
I know you're talking about lawnmowers, but it's all right.
Okay. Sanitation. Our type four cell, uh, three construction bids that came in, they're way over. So we're going to be recommending when it comes to the council meeting on the fifth to reject all bids and allow us to rebid. Um, Joe and Park Hill engineer are working uh, through the bids and creating some ad alternates in there to hopefully bring down uh, the price.
Is that James?
Pardon?
What kind of cost, estimated cost is that?
Six hundred?
For the total project? It's about six hundred and fifty thousand.
Question, and this is, this is just off the wall question. A scraper would cost under a million?
Over a million.
Over a million. Just wondered if, if we, if we put that money toward a scraper and then we dug our own fields, would we even do that? Just a thought. Cause we're continually going to have to keep doing bids.
Correct.
We do use a scraper out there.
It goes back to manpower. Is it, you know, usually a dirt contractor can probably have that dug out six weeks.
Sure.
Are we going to take six weeks? Probably not. We have the surveying equipment. I mean, that's another added cost, but I mean, we can definitely look into.
I did, I didn't know if it would be a, a cost over the long haul, be a cost savings.
I'm not going to lie, we do need a new scraper though because
I remember that.
Take it from our heel or start pile and dropping it into the actual pit to cover the trash. But yeah, that could be a consideration for sure. But we have to include all the other variables that are going to come into play.
It's not in the box idea though.
So Andrea, I know you always want out of the office to drive a mower. Do you want to drive a scraper?
Scraper. So much fun.
It does.
Sounds terrifying to me.
So um, in this year's budget, we've got to replace the rear loader approximately four hundred thousand. And then the other thing we're asking for, uh, within, we have a part-time employee. We'd like to convert them uh, to a full-time status just to help us stay in front of things. Cause um, we also with our, correct me if I'm wrong here, Joe, with our sanitation, we also try to clean the alleys and do various things like that and that in itself can consume a lot of different people, uh, especially in the wake of what we've gone through. I hope we don't go through another one for a long, long time, but uh, it's really been challenging uh, this year.
But that rear loader that we're, or the sanitation is asking for is one that goes through the alleys. We have two people on there, uh, CDL driver and then the, the helper that goes through the alleys and picks up things that's bulky furniture, uh, tree limbs, but they have to be a certain size, four foot, cut nice and neat. So we can act, be able to put it in our rear loader and not, not get hurt doing it. Um, sometimes uh, there's mattresses or things like that, trying to clean up our alleys, pretty much where it is. So yeah.
Is there a diameter limitation on tree limbs?
Mostly about maybe three inches, four inches, not, it's not tree trunks type that we want to put in that truck. It's going to mess up course of cylinders and the way it compacting.
That is.
Just the swimmer pool.
Your presentation.
Missed pool.
Yeah, we skipped the pool. We passed it. We all had it.
Yeah, we have it. I don't know.
Through the pool. Uh, again, this is a enterprise fund item. Um, it doesn't make a profit. Uh, it's just kind of one of those items. Um, there's been a lot of discussion about building a new pool and relocating the pool, different things like this. I think within the last couple of weeks, uh, the mayor and I have been having um, conversations about what happens. Um, if we did a study at the pool, verify that all the plumbing and things are still in good condition. Maybe we keep it where it's at. And then we go and tear down the bathhouse and build a new um, facility there, but also meeting room, party room, whatever that's next to it. Uh, expand the fencing, put in a splash pad in that area. Eventually even build a zero gravity that goes up to about two feet. So you create another area. Um, I think that would be a lot.
Yes.
I knew it would be so nice.
And you think, I mean, you.
That road, that road could be pushed back and could be. This pool is great. So pool and I think that people when I look at brown cell, the most of them, I love them, but I'm not a lap swimmer. I don't go exercise. This is one that people can use for things like that, you know? I mean, they have it.
Those pools are really nice pools. I think what makes us so attracted to them are the really nice bathrooms.
The nice.
The bathrooms.
That's what I, and the mushroom. I would try and add the toddler room, the, the walk-in, that is.
It's amazing. That's what we're attracted to. Yeah. And so I think Dustin brought it to us in, in another city where they had just taken the pool and demoed everything else around it and repaired the the workings of the pool, the, the pumps, the gears, all the things that makes it work and then build us a beautiful party room that could also be used for also birthday parties and things, but a training room for, for city employees, dual purpose. Um, and the wonderful bathrooms and a nice concession stand and all the things that it needs that I don't know that it needs, but we could, I mean, maybe do a splash pad coming off of it. What we could do is endless. But we have the space and it's in.
Believe me, the, the concession stand opening up outside the pool too. So that there's events at the park that it could utilize, you could utilize that, that concession stand too.
Mm-hmm. It doesn't have to be within the gates of the pool.
Plenty of room for parking if you reimagine it, which isn't really my best quality to be able to reimagine things, but the pool, the hole in the ground, the actual pool is not the problem or what people would like to see different. It's, we want the additional amenities. And maybe we could afford to do it that way. Bottom line too.
I think it
I agree.
Is a lot less than building a whole new aquatic facility.
And it's major reinvestment in city park. It's important to me. It's major reinvestment there that we build off.
EDC, the, the that group that
EDC?
Yeah, that does that. You know, if they're on board, that, that fund could be used in it too, couldn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's parks. I mean, that's part. Maybe we could tie it in with some grant money. I mean, that's always a hope, but they really like water features. I know they're, they're once, have been flow, but it's a maybe. We have the room there. I drove it multiple times about a week ago, thinking about that and you could just go north and there's really room to the other directions as well. And just thought it's kind of endless what we could do here.
Well, that park is super nice now that we've updated it, but we went out there recently to go see and you know, there's just so much space.
It's huge.
And I know that most of it has, you know, you have your disc golf and that has to be spread out. So you can't put anything in the middle of that. And then the soccer things, but there's a lot of unutilized space.
Think, I mean, I think it'd be fair to say it's, it's bigger than we need.
Oh, yeah, a hundred acres.
What we have, but in it, in with that
Awesome.
More to maintain.
Yeah, it could be.
It's what we have and we gotta, we gotta work with it.
Yeah.
Make the best of it.
If we keep investing in that, does that inspire some of the surrounding neighborhoods to self-invest and?
It might.
Change.
Right. It could be. Not investing in it never does.
No.
Yeah.
You know, we've got to invest if we want others to invest and um, you know, we've talked about the oxy and how well it's doing and do we jump into phase two or do we, as we're investing in the pool, invest in those fields out there and make them better and more attractive and build outdoor restrooms out there as well that uh, we can utilize and, and really um, make that park something special.
Those are the projects I'm excited about. In that, I believe from talking to citizens or what I believe they want to see is Loveland reinvest in ourself. When I was out there, drove out there at lunch and drove around the pool and then I drove out there that evening, two of the fields were being used. Time. And they're just practice fields, but they were being used. It was hot.
Uh, that's where we practiced for soccer, every soccer season. That's where the team that my kid is on, we always practice out there.
But I've been humbled to see how much those fields out there with the oxy open and busy. How much the fields at city park are being used, probably even right as we speak.
So that phone call y'all got of that car slowly going through the park.
It was probably.
Was practicing and did look at me.
Now we know who it is. So.
Does he see it? As he should have been.
He's probably like, who is this crazy person going real slow past these kids' fields?
They don't ask who I am whenever I'm going through there. I don't know how they know who I am all the time.
I don't have a clue how anyone knows who you are.
I don't know anything about.
Get my face on the side.
I don't know how to make a baseball field, but, but it's there. We just go in and I please know what I say will be wrong, but level it out, put the chain link back on, paint some things and buy new bases. I'm sure there's tons of things there that I don't.
Okay, clear.
Maybe some, maybe some nice stands. Maybe there's some way in placement where you don't get hit by a foul ball to put some cute, small pieces of playground equipment in between the fields and, and you just invest in those and, and then the pool, and then you go to the other side and you invest in the other field, the one that has the lights. And I mean, the civic center is nice. And we just build off that. The playgrounds out there are nice. The covered areas to eat are, are nice and new. Anyway, I'm a little bit passionate about that.
Santa Claus came and met our kindergarten class this year at the country, I mean, at the city park. It was so fun. Like
Right.
That was a field trip. These kids are like, we're going on a field trip to meet Santa and we went to the park and it was perfect.
I loved the idea about the room at, at a pool to have a birthday party and then use it as dual purpose as well. I thought that was really smart.
It could be you, I mean, birthday parties, family events.
Yeah, right. It's endless.
So is that something that when the community development corporation meets in early August?
Yeah.
Y'all think that we ought to convey that from councils, something for, for them to look at in funding? Or funding the, the study, the review of it? So we get a better idea of.
And I say, yes, they're not going to have an idea. That's what any of us want if we don't say.
They never know what we say.
Great ideas going on too, that they come to us and be like, well, this is what we were thinking and maybe it's a better idea.
Uh, in addition of a pickleball court out there, I, I think that would be great if, you know, if I have all the money in the world and do all the things. Cause we have the room. I'm completely for that. My opinion.
Oh, wow. Good. And I also have very young kids. We're going to be here a long time. I can utilize that area for years to come.
Even though those that don't have small kids, we would, we would.
That's what I, oh, absolutely. Take your grandkids out there.
It's a nice pool. The water feature is nice. It's a nice pool. The water feature is nice. It's big and it's been well maintained. Pumps fail.
Well, it's a big part.
We didn't see any negative stuff about, I'm not saying we didn't get a couple, but it wasn't crazy when we had to shut the pool down that. I mean, for how many days? Not crazy on Facebook. I mean, it might've been crazy with phone calls. So I'm sorry if you got a lot of phone calls, but I think it was really negative. Things happen.
And it's aging and the public knows that.
Oh, yeah. Other pools have to shut for random things.
We really, the only kind of pushback we had and it, and also civic center is just that, you know, we had to close things, adjust things. And people had stuff scheduled and then they were scrambling. And you know, that's unfortunate. We don't like it. And we, you know, we're very aware when we're shutting things down of the ramifications that it has. But it's things that you can't help and you just got to work through it.
I'm also very glad we have the civic center to use for FEMA. It was a very nice place to have.
We can, you know, I think investing in this pool, investing in City Park, it's a big place. And we don't have to fill every square inch, but we can make it a place to where uh, people will want to go, want to go hang out, go for walks, play disc golf, go to the pool, go just a lot of different things. It's got a lot of room. The Easter egg hunt that we had out there was, was very successful. Still don't know how we went through, what?
Four thousand eggs in less than 11 minutes, but.
It, it was.
That them kids, you tell them to clean their room, they won't do it, but picking up Easter eggs.
But build off.
Fries egg in there, right?
But build off the Easter egg hunt. There's probably other things we can have at the park that, that we're not. I mean, maybe there's other civic events that we can have. Maybe there's something at Christmas we could do out there. It's endless what we could do.
Oh, Lasha.
I'm also interested in seeing about getting air conditioning at the civic center. Making that, and I think we have the civic improvement fund. I know it's not an area that we're talking about right now. Think there's, I don't know if it's enough. I'm praying it's enough.
I didn't realize there was a AC until y'all told me the day of the tour. We did a birthday party for my son out there two Octobers ago. And it was fine because it was October. So I never would have been. If I did it in my, for my July kid, we would.
And it's the cinder block building or whatever that is. And so it stays. It, it does a good job. It was well built.
I just hate to see us do a whole lot of improvements and have to raise the cost too much.
Agree.
Cause that is a place that folks can afford to.
Absolutely.
We think it's very.
Needs to go up some, but I'm not talking about doubling.
Yeah, not four, five, six hundred dollars.
We have plenty of the high class expensive venues.
And we're not going to be competing with those there.
And we have even more venues coming up. There was another new one that just opened.
But when you're there in July at a dance on a Saturday night. And they open the back, the raise up the garage door, but it could be so much nicer with air.
For sure.
And we can look at that.
Like Michael said, I think it's just a building that is, is affordable to a lot and it's used a lot. I'm shocked at how much it's used. It's, I'm shocked in a good way. It's impressive. But I do know that Dustin did mention that we don't even al- always cover the costs of that building in the winter when it's cold and it costs a lot to heat the building. We're not always covering the cost of it, so.
It's like ninety-five bucks to rent it.
It's like that.
You know, if it's under two fifty, two fifty, probably would not be a bad price and that, that would double that revenue.
But for revenue, I mean, that, that's a large increase of revenue and you're just getting ninety-five.
I'm going to look at a real fast.
Thank you.
I thought the bathrooms were in good shape. They're not brand new.
Use the kitchen. Oh, no, the bathrooms are super old and outdated, but they're perfect.
Right. I thought the same.
They're clean.
I thought the same.
The tile's not broken. I mean, it's a blast in the past, but.
Yes.
They.
If you want to rent that with the kitchen, it's ninety dollars. If you want to rent it and not utilize the kitchen, it's seventy dollars.
Oh, what?
Yeah.
And then you do a hundred dollar deposit and I remember I had to bring my check up here, hundred dollar deposit, handed it to them, came up here and got the key the day before the event, cause you get it for the whole weekend, not access, but the key, cause they can't let you in. And then when I brought the key back on Monday, they handed my check back. It's so easy.
Yes.
That's why people utilize it so much.
Oh, you can, you can have a birthday party or a tinsel there for.
But I didn't remember it being that cheap.
Joe and James, Mayor Buck Skimper mentioned the civic improvement fund. Um, for the benefit of, of Councilmember McCabe. Do you want to explain how that works?
From the sale of property, right, Joe? Isn't that where that money is there from, originated from?
Yes, uh, it originated from, um, we're currently seeing about two hundred thousand dollars in that fund. And it just gets funded by revenues from the civic center now, so.
And what's the intended use of it?
For civic center improvements.
But we haven't made any large civic center improvements in years.
We need to get, we're replacing tables and chairs. That's what we pull matters.
Right.
That's why all the new chairs are from that. Yeah, we want better supply chain issues. We couldn't get chairs.
Right.
Now I think we have them updated.
I just think it would be such a nice service for our citizens if it had, if it had air conditioning.
Yeah, there's two. I don't know how much HVAC costs.
Right.
It's not going to be.
It's a big building.
Two hundred thousand dollars, but maybe from a big building.
But it might be rented during the day more if that's possible to maybe. During.
Well, and you know.
In the week.
Know if you could.
In the week.
Look at it this way. I guess if you up the price, maybe not. But like I said, I picked up the key on a Friday night. And I assume I had, I know that I had access to it from midnight to midnight. Could we do? I mean.
Put a.
You can do.
Electronic.
Yeah, but, but what I mean is, well, yeah, that would be easier to be, if you did it that way, because you could do morning shifts, afternoon shifts. They could do a baby shower in the morning. The thing is, well, yeah. You have to, you can't trust them. Like, we made sure that we cleaned it up to the same standard it was when we left, except the floor, because there wasn't a broom. But, so yeah, I wasn't thinking about cleaning crew.
We can look at these.
And the possibility of demoing that older building that's out there, getting it gone. So little activity building.
Councilmember Powell's first.
Yeah, he interfered there.
They said maybe he'll want to buy it. It's like the size of this room, maybe, right? I had a whole.
It's a little bit bigger and had a very special. Dance floor.
I've never been in it. I didn't even know that's what it was.
Kind of, um, prefabbed building that sits there across the street from the pool. It's in, they've got it and boarded up now, I think, so nobody could use it. I know it's probably fifty years old, probably.
What else? Our comments, thoughts regarding?
Definitely committed to trying to get the three percent pay raise. That's what I'll put myself on. Say that I'm committed to that.
That's six.
Thank you.
Question on the command. What this is?
Sorry.
So sorry, taking it away.
Yeah.
You can take it. I can give a brief overview.
Uh, we just patched out, uh, what we call the enterprise fund in a formal budget report. Uh, we have, uh, updated a lot of the year end and, uh, department requested or for the new fiscal year. Um, so, uh, you mayor and councilmember, uh, councilmember Stuart, y'all familiar with that, Mayor McCabe? You're not familiar?
That's all right.
So what happens is they go, we go, there's different funds within our budget. Of course, we're going over enterprises time and each one has a revenue page, which how we fund the, the actual fund. And then you have the expenditure following pages through departments. Um, the enterprise consists of water admin, uh, water production, wastewater, swimming pool. And some other ones called developer, developer's capital, which, uh, is not used, uh, and capital improvements. But, uh, that's a quick brief overview. Again, uh, only year end and, and fiscal year twenty-five have been updated. Revenues have been updated also, but we're still working on those. Uh, so if you look at something that's kind of not normal or what's projected is not what we budgeted for, we're still working through that, so. But I just wanted to get this out y'all, get this out to y'all, uh, get you familiarized with the budget again and each line item, so. Something y'all are used to. And if you notice at the very top, the headings, you have twenty-two, twenty-three actual. Then you go into this year's budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. This is what we currently have budget, budgeted. And the twenty-three, twenty-four projected is what we're projected to end at, at the end of this year. And of course, your twenty-four, twenty-five budget is what we're, uh, anticipating of asking for fiscal year twenty-five.
Go on that, on that first page, those are all same as what was budgeted twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yes, like I said, the, the revenues have not been updated. Uh, same thing, uh, believe James went over that three and a half percent, that three and a half percent needs to be updated on the garbage fee. So, yeah, some of those.
So if you look at that revenue page at thirty-five, twelve, our enter fund transfers out. That's where we take money, move it back into the general fund. And then one that will also confuse you is just lost it. No, right below it, thirty-five, thirteen, garbage clearing. Um, our, that's our sanitation and there's a lot of things that go into that. And that just moves money back into the appropriate line items of the sanitation area to make it all balance out. There's some weird titles or line items and I've been trying to figure out, I have to look at Joe and try to figure out what some of them are. But we, we worked through it.
Yeah, it's just considered a pass through. Um, if you notice, uh, yeah, garbage thing thirty-five, thirteen, and if you notice, uh, thirty-five, oh, four. Uh, the projected is zero right now, but it was budgeted at two point one million. But since, uh, that garbage clearing hasn't gone through and gone through the different funds, that's why I didn't budget as projected is zero. And left that two point three five five million there. So it's going to offset that cost too. So, yeah. As soon as we get it up to date and allocated correctly and accrued correctly, then we'll, uh, that'll more simple.
Second page is our, uh, water and wastewater order administration. And this is, we're talking about weird line items under personnel services that mentions casual. That's seasonal. Why we got casual, I don't know.
Yes. What does that mean? Oh, it's our part-time.
Depending on which department you're talking about.
And if you'll notice up there where it says clerical, uh, projected is at one sixty-seven approximately and FY twenty-five is at about one eighty-seven, part of the big adjustment in there.
Raise.
Uh, it's got the raise, but it's also, we adjusted Nancy's position uh, to business manager and adjusted her salary as well. So there, there, that's partly where that's at.
That's a new position for Nancy.
Yes, yes.
The title.
Job she's been doing.
Yes, yes. And whatever you're paying her is not enough. She does.
And personnel services have been adjusted to that and all the, uh, following within there, all the, yes, three percent has been adjusted into everything as far as your retirement, your FICA, um, and so on. So all that is spawning.
So it's, it's.
Yes.
Really, but I was supposed to do so much. I asked this before, um, I get two, I get two water bills. Yes. Could I sign up for electronic water bills? Yes, I could. But I've always wondered, I, I have, cause I have jokingly to this, because I have the sprinkler meter and I have the house meter, if they could be on one bill. And then I would get one bill with one stamp. So the credit union gets two. I just wonder if I could get one with one stamp. Just always wondered if we could.
To utilize that. That's two that I know of just right off the top of my head.
A bit.
And there's like.
And I've been told that it's an encode issue. Just, I don't know, be magic if we could make it work out. Be a lot of postage saved, I would think.
We will look at it, especially with postage going up.
Yes.
Just sidebar, it's now a certified letter, which our code compliance department, they're close to ten bucks a piece.
And we send out tons of those, so wish there was a better.
Better way there.
We will look at that and see, it may take us this year to get it figured out, but we will definitely. Um, look at that item.
When you receive a utility bill, you receive a utility bill, it's, it's water, wastewater, street lights, sewer improvement fee, water improvement fee and everything on that one. When you receive your sprinkler bill, um, that's just water in itself. So it's, it's kind of difficult for encode to put that together because the way we do our accounts, that's, that's how it works. So you're not being charged any of the other stuff, but you're.
They could reformat it and put it on there. And maybe also if we do another, another push to sign up for only electronic billing. Hey, you know, you can opt out of that paper bill. Maybe people will.
Hate paper bills. It's so nice today. I got an email telling me what.
Water bill today.
And it went down fifty dollars. I'm proud of myself. It took a lot, but yeah, it's so nice to just.
Right. But I need to go opt out of the bill. So I'm sure. Yes.
So no, I don't.
I'm sure people just like me need to opt out of the paper bill too.
And this postage also carries, uh, the requirements that we had to do for water quality. And that's, we have to send that out to every single customer, uh, in the city level, well, actually every, every water customer. It's not technically a city level and city limits. It's, it's, uh, outside city limits and and sometimes we have to send them out to a different location because that owner of the water account lives in a different state. So that, that does have to be mailed out as a water quality or water quality. We also call it a consumer confidence report, so.
We can look at those things and see what we can do.
Different. And it'll.
Even if it's two pieces of paper, like you said, one's going to have all the things and one only has the thing. Could they not fold the two in the same envelope?
Water bills is an automated.
Okay. Preparated.
Well, good, because I would feel sad for the person have, well, I was thinking a machine probably did that, but.
Does, it seals it. We have a sealer that seals it, but it's called a Z-fold. That's why it comes out. Sometimes it's kind of difficult to tear off.
It's difficult to open.
Depends on.
Oh, I forget they're that tight. See, I haven't had one in so long. I forget it's the ones you have to like tear the side off.
Is the envelope?
Yeah, not in an envelope. Yeah.
If you want true stress, get that bill when you're in a hurry and trying to open it, because there's no.
You get a paper bill.
Me too. I put it in my notes. I'm opt out.
Wasn't given the option of anything.
You weren't here.
I also didn't get my first paycheck when I came here.
God, Andrea.
It's been a year. It's only been a year.
Also got cut by the city secretary through blood when I wasn't even on payroll yet, so.
It could happen again.
Sounds like it.
It was your first paycheck, boss. Remember you have to earn it first.
We held it back.
Really? Were you laughing at it?
I'm not violent.
Thanks, Tom.
Very assault city manager over pay raise.
To get to this.
And what's the name they've used on him was.
Like I said, it's preliminary as soon as we.
I just found those pizza.
He'll get you something to eat. About four pages in, and I'm sorry when I have page numbers, but, um. About four pages in, and I'm sorry when I have page numbers, but, um. I can't even tell you what title is, is a dead list. The water department.
Yeah, four, sixteen, yeah, the water department, four, sixteen, forty.
Down under repairs and maintenance. Under other structures, the two hundred and twenty eight thousand. This, uh, couple of big items on here, just.
Cause it's way over.
Uh, repair to the water buildings included, not all the costs are in there, but also. We had to replace, uh, water pump at the pump station. Do you remember what that was?
There's a Lee Street, uh, pump.
Lee Street pump, I, do you remember the cost?
About seventy five thousand dollars that we had to spend there that was not budgeted.
We, we are going to try our best. We're going to take all of our expenditures, including personnel and put it in there. And see.
Uh, what they cover.
Our vehicles are, are a big quagmire right now. We're trying to work through that. But we did, we had three Tahos totaled. Um, we had, uh, Kohl's pickup get totaled.
It's just so frustrating because they don't look that bad. And that was so frustrating.
And they'll pick them up before you replace them.
I did receive the check for repairs today and.
That's the bad part is they'll pick them up before you get.
Can't carry full coverage auto insurance.
Yeah, we're not letting, that's the discussion we're having, but. So that was a big item in that one, um. As we're going through this. Oh, the next page, uh, four, sixty two, under motor vehicles, there's a thirty four, six, eighty. That was a water pickup. It wasn't budgeted, but the council approved it early on in the, in the budget year. So you'll see a budget amendment on that.
Done last year.
And then. I'm four, six, three, the, the next page after that, you'll see under other structures. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars that's been expended and this was a Kaufman lift station. We had to replace two pumps. At about seventy five thousand a piece. So.
We have many budgets this next year for another one for, is that a planned expenditure or just in case when it happens thing? Seventy five in there for other structures in the forty, four, sixty three, forty three, thirty one.
Yeah, that's a, it's a constant that.
Okay, right. Just knowing it's coming and having the money there to you.
If we don't need it.
Well, most of the time we try to utilize that to, uh, help. Errors, need to do repairs. Lift stations, that's the biggest thing we talked about Kaufman's station. Uh, I want to back up to the water department. I want to make sure that. Where on the water mains? I'm trying to. It's going to be four, six, two, five, four, three, two. Capital outlay. That one fifty is usually spent on, uh, water meters and fire hydrants, but because of. Potential of getting an AMI system, we held off on buying any water meters.
I do not see that. Five, four.
Four, sixteen.
Yeah, these are all four, six, two, but he said five, four.
Four, not four, not four, three, two.
There's not five. It's not.
I've got, I've got it.
Five, I'm sorry, four, five, three, four.
Four, five, three, two.
Okay, okay. Gotcha. I have four, five, three, two.
Water main, yeah.
Water mains, okay.
Off on that in twenty three, twenty four. Is that what you're saying?
But yes, we've held off on it. Also, the one above it, uh, for ninety thousand, which is four, six, two, four, five, three, one for improvements. We held off on that one just because of that, uh, major repair we had to do to one of our pumps. So we held off on that. That's usually for improvements on. Uh, buildings, uh, pump stations, uh, water wells and things like that.
Now, on that, on water mains, you said you held off that on the projected twenty three, twenty four, it's zero, but on the twenty four, twenty five. Budget, you do have a hundred and fifty there.
Yes.
For water mains.
So he's gonna, they're hoping to do it this year instead.
And if we do it, then we can drop that down even more.
Where you at now, boss?
Four, six, three, forty four, twenty two. Except professionals.
Forty four, thirty one.
Forty four, what did we?
Forty four, thirty one, professional services.
Yes. That's because we were expanding to hire professional services and the higher equipment we were utilizing for, uh, because the lift station went down.
Yeah.
So we had to utilize that to hire, uh, or lease out.
For the Kaufman, uh, lift station. So when you see that. Number. And then down there on that ninety three, two, thirty one down in.
Yes, that's what, uh, we purchased two trucks. One was budgeted. And the other one was that thirty four, six, eight.
One was a crane truck and then a wastewater pickup. So that's, when you look at that ninety three, two, thirty one.
Forty five, forty one. Don't be fun forcing.
Yeah, forty five, forty four. Forty five, fifty one. More than ninety three, two, thirty one.
Got you.
It's a lot of numbers, sorry.
And a couple of pages over, we jump into sanitation, which is four, six, six. Seventy eight thousand on third supervision. That is just, uh, Kevin Sauer.
Yes.
So that's where that sits, I think, a few years back. Y'all asked to pull that out separately. Traditionally, his was spread over several funds, but there was a discussion to put it all into one. And then the number below that, the two, forty five, six, I mean, that is the rest of the sanitation team. There's six employees in there. With that consist, uh, we have two drivers. Uh, three at the landfill, one at the recycling center, one or six employees do.
What is longevity instability pay?
We pay two dollars for every year that a person's here. Every staff's longevity, stability is the, uh, stability checks that you receive in November for the appreciation banquet.
They get them then.
And here's the service also. That's why it fluctuates because people retire, people leave and it, it fluctuates. The longer you've been here, the more you get. So that's why you see, you may see some line items on longevity that's dropped down. You're like, well, why is it dropping down? It's because that person left and we have a new employee.
It's conveniently given at the holidays for purpose.
Stability, yes.
If you weren't in a government entity, might you call that a bonus? I'm saying if you, if you weren't in a government entity. A business might.
Others might, right?
We don't.
Like stability back.
Right, it's, it's, it's for you being here. Like somebody tried to use the word slush. We were like, we, we don't use that word. It's for you being here for a long.
Thinks I didn't understand when I started.
I was trying to find it on you.
It's going to be professional services also forty four, thirty one.
Four, six, six, forty four, thirty one.
Bottom, forty three, thirty one, professional service.
Yeah. So I, I have one worksheet that's landscape design and then he gave me one in portrait, so. Right in jiving the same direction. The, uh, fourteen, the one million, four seventy seven, one eighty seven, fifty four. Um, that's republic. It's our sanitation. Um, and then. Twenty four, twenty five, the one, four, seven, five, that number, we haven't put in their rate increase yet. So that's still going to be plus three and a half percent. The other thing to make note of that when we, um, have that adjustment, our tipping fees out of the landfill will also need to adjust.
Which, and when was the last time that we did that?
Two years ago.
Did two years ago.
Or contracted every two years.
Being a landfill kind of sidebar to the debris fields that. We are working with a company in Denver city to get all of our tires that direction. Cole has been working on that since he got back. I'm trying to understand the numbers because it seems like we have to haul them and then we got to pay them to take them as well, which doesn't really make sense.
And they recycle them and get to.
Make it a win-win off all of this, so we're. We're trying to. Work through that, but hopefully our goal is to have all the debris fields gone by the end of August.
Love it.
We were trying to get them done by four school start, but that just wasn't happening. But.
But progress is being made every day. I see it every single day.
The one going towards Walmart, it already looks fast.
One thing you don't see on here that we still need to create is an amortization schedule for the new cell that'll become. That comes on, we'll need to create the, the schedule for that so that we can now appropriately. Take care of the financial pieces of that.
That's utilized as the internal financing fund. That we have to create amortization schedules so we can bear ourselves back with interest.
That's about it on enterprise, any. Do you have anything else? Those are all my notes that I had. Only on the note I have, they've already happened. But we talked about street a lot earlier. That's just a pass through, is it not? Yeah. Other questions on enterprise?
That's just in that one.
So is, is there one on, is that on?
Yeah, there's not a grand total yet.
Okay.
So my grand total for the enterprise question?
Yeah, see, I. Revenue over or under expenditure. So we're projected to end this year fifty eight thousand, four hundred and eighty two, under. But next year, hopefully our goal will be to end it under five hundred and twenty three thousand. That was my next question, but then I saw that. So I know obviously we want to stay in the line on.
I don't say, when you say under, it's not.
It's not, we made that money.
No, it's, it's, it's actually our revenues aren't keeping up with our expenditures at this point. So I'm saying this is, this is still a work in draft. So we're thinking accounting, uh, governmental accounting here.
Right.
It's not under budget, it's over budget by fifty eight thousand. And next year we're looking at over budget or five twenty three, but again, the revenues have not been.
Oh, okay. I see that wording.
So it's a work in progress.
Yes, it's still, this is just a preliminary, want to get this out to y'all just to make sure. I had something on enterprise. Just preliminary. By August first, you, you should have, James, you wanted to one, three and six. Yes. One, three and six was just general fund, cemetery fund and your enterprise fund. So.
Those are the three that y'all will get on the first and. We'll start working through those. Like I said, we may want to add a couple of days just to go through this. Uh, we're still trying to get numbers. From damage to see how much it's going to impact this year's budget. I mean, there's some things we don't want to do. We just don't, we don't have a choice.
Take care of that. We have a copy of that before that meeting or just at that meeting?
On the first, you, until you get this Charlie.
We know when we will know from P M L from insurance.
They've been pretty, I mean, as far as the vehicles, they've told us what they're going to cover and then. What's totaled and then as Andreas said, they gave us a check today. So now we got to work on getting those hell dents repaired. Um, we received as far as the water department, when we put on a temporary roof. They covered that quickly. They told us that that was there, but as far, I don't think we've gotten anything else up far as what they're covering and what they're not. I think we're trying to make sure we've got everything filed.
But we are able to repair the six vehicles?
The six have been totaled and we've got.
The others with just the regular.
Forty twos. That have some hail damage and, and I guess we just need to look at them and see.
Make calls on each one.
It, yeah, decide what, what's, cause some of them you look at and you really can't tell or it may be just a little bit on one side.
That's how it was at my house.
And then there's others that look pretty beat up, so.
You know, in our neighborhood, we have three that sit outside. It's so crazy how different it is because we were close to you. We're not far.
Right.
I wonder if the way y'all are built.
I have no idea. My son's big upset like this on the north side of his truck.
That's how Tyler's is. It's just the front, because it came in from the back, the front of his vehicle was old.
I was just hopeful that we'd be getting numbers on the water department building soon and because that's the largest damage and, you know.
I'll see what I can find out.
But I'm glad to hear that they're being responsive and it seems slow to me, but I'm not doing this every day. So y'all say it's not, so that's great.
P M L risk has done, I mean, you know, they, they cover the entire state and they. It has been, it's been kind of rough on them from the Panhandle fires to here. Just one little thing after another. So, um, it, it's been kind of crazy. Um, have y'all had a chance to kind of go through this and look at it? Do you have any questions or anything you want more clarification or anything like that?
We're still, um, trying to get our numbers together regarding the property tax rate. We're still trying to get all of, of that together so that.
So I do have a question on that. I had a call from a citizen this week at saying something about. They've tried to explain it to me and they got interrupted and hadn't called me back yet. An evaluation fee or something went up.
Their valuation?
No. I swear it said evaluation fee, something about because this evaluation fee went up, y'all have to lower property taxes, but I don't know what that means.
If the value, uh, the taxable value of all the property and that property tax rate, they'll balance. So it's not. They can't go up on the property value and that, and that property tax rate. It, it, it'll get to a no new tax rate. Deal that, and they'll figure that, all that out and kind of give us those numbers.
Well, I said I would keep that in mind, but I didn't know it, so. Kind of clueless.
I know that was kind of rudimentary, but.
No, it, it was there. The, um, you got about a small wiggle room of about three percent. Legislature's trying to really get that down to zero. It's an extremely.
That went up, we couldn't go up on property taxes anyway.
But, but there's a certain number once you cross and ours is kind of complicated. Because we have a percentage of our sales tax that's for property tax reduction. So that's got to get calculated in there. And then I'm still trying to figure out how the disaster declaration affects us because. There's was something out there that if you've been declared a disaster. There's was something out there that if you've been declared a disaster, it can factor into your evaluate. And I haven't been able to. Understand what that is yet. So we're we're trying to work through those pieces. To make sense. No one wants to raise taxes, ain't just to raise them. But it also. Costs to operate the city and provide the services that we have. And. I just think we're all ingrained that. You know, my taxes are too high, my taxes pay for everything. And they really don't. They pay for a very small portion of what we do.
Absolutely.
In the city, so.
Do we know when we will find out from FEMA regarding the seventy-five twenty-five percent match?
When we file everything with the the public disaster assistance, I. When I talked FEMA, they told me we would probably hear something when two weeks after filing.
At when's filing date?
I think the sixteenth.
Of August, okay, so sometime, best potentially.
They'll also reimburse us for the the garbage so much per cubic yard, right?
Correct.
I believe so. Cole's working on that as well.
Okay. And. When those, when those funds come in, um. What do we foresee doing with them? Paying ourselves back for the overtime that we recoup some of that?
We'll, we'll put it. General fund where that is and whatever.
I mean, there's wear and tear on our equipment. There's lots of things, I know.
We'll place it back within our system and try to recover what cost we can. Uh, our overtime is higher, uh, just because of that, we'll probably have even more overtime as we we move forward.
Even a vehicle or something if we have to.
I mean, there's some that we're gonna have to replace no matter what. You know, the private. People out there can buy their car back from the insurance and drive it. Um, and the risk pool kind of through that option out there that we could buy our cars back. The problem is then they'll only cover it with liability. We cannot have. A city vehicle out there with only liability on it. I mean. It puts the city in too much jeopardy. It puts the operator of that vehicle in much liability, so. You know, we really don't have that option. What I'm trying to do is ask them if they will. Um, allow us to have these for at least another sixty, maybe ninety days. So that we've got time to get something in. Uh, I think Captain Lopez has been looking at some options. Of um. Some tie hoes we can get in here pretty quickly. Um, we may find some. Mary Kay surplus ones and bring them in and.
We'll have them wrapped. It'll be, it'll be fine.
October's coming up.
Yeah.
We'll leave it for a month. That'll be fantastic.
Cool. But there are some out there that, you know, we've just got to look forward to see what we can find. Uh, into, I mean, we can share within P D, the 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 tie hose. It's not ideal, but we can make it work.
Well, just until we can get them replaced.
We get them replaced, so that's, that's the hard part because they haven't opened the window yet for the new tie hose. And there's gonna be a lot of places are gonna be asking just with all the the. Weird weather we've had, so.
Houston alone will be a.
So at that point in time, do we, and just throwing this out there, since the Tahoe's are so hard and this maybe is three more that we weren't even thinking about. Do we need to pivot and say, okay, do we look at the Explorer? I'm just throwing that out there. Do we buy a pickup? Do we? Okay, that's the, the Explorers have not held up as well. Is there another vehicle that we could look at in? Trying to go if they get the Tahoe's or can't get enough?
They want series pickup or something.
A sedan, I'm, you know, I'm not, I don't know a lot about cars.
Is they can't really carry all their equipment. Uh, and it's hard to put a cage in there to transport, so then then they'd have to top two vehicles if they arrest somebody.
And there's not that really anyone doing sedans other than. Chargers and my experience with Chargers, they spent more time uh in the shop than they did out on the streets. I think that there's some option because there's some states out there that bought a whole bunch and then they realize they didn't need them. We've just got to find those those niches. And uh, and do what we we've got to do.
I was thinking, I mean, do we even go to try to buy very newly used, you know, we have, do we pivot at that point?
You know, the one pivot, and we haven't really talked about it much, but one pivot, you know, there, there are places that have white ones available. We might, if worse comes to worse.
Limit ourselves so much.
But.
Oh, yeah.
We're trying to explore everything to see.
Like an easy option right there.
You're talking about in this.
Yes, sir.
Like in our inspections department, but they were talking about an additional code officer. And we have the health inspector that services. Is there a way to combine that? Is maybe the new code enforcement officer also carries the health inspector?
It's something that we could potentially look at traditionally, you're.
Kind of make sure.
Health inspector has. Certifications and education that really doesn't fall into code compliance.
Right.
But. Those are things we can always explore and see if that option is out there for us. I just know between. The substandard structures.
Oh, yeah.
And other things, he's. Where Eli says he's he's at a point a lot of times where he's not proactive, we're more reactive in in trying to take care. Of code and and that is challenging, but some of the things we've been. Tossing around internally. Because we do a lot of contracting out for mowing, for board ups, for all of that kind of stuff. And. Some of this depends on where we end up with. Our wireless water meters, because if our meter guys aren't, if if our wireless, we go with that. We may not need them to read meters. So do we look at possibly reassigning? Or. Create a position that basically has like community enhancement officers. To where we go out and we, instead of contracting out. We mow the lots, we board up the homes, we keep that stuff internally, but also this team. Uh, takes care of our right aways. Textile's not gonna take care of our right aways. That we want them to that level. There's nothing more embarrassing than seeing these weeds in the sidewalks and stuff.
Bus drops in S P C as we speak.
And you go down on Alamo by one fourteen, I mean, the weeds are taller than stuff. So maybe we create a community enhancement team that that's their focus is. To do this kind of stuff, maybe they could help with with code compliance as well by saying, hey, we were out doing this, we noticed this house. We noticed this structure. Um, but just having a couple of employees whose sole focus is to take care of those little things that become big things. Take care of those things. We've got, uh, the chamber started the initiative of the one fourteen. Uh, beautification, we've got some businesses. How do we help them? Make it look better. How do we help people that when they come in to Lebanon, they immediately notice the difference that?
Yeah.
Our town.
That'd be a lot better than having the code enforcement officer. Out mowing. Overtime, trying to get overtime in and mowing those things because you didn't have time to do it during the day because. The optics of that is terrible, is like he's the guy writing the ticket and then he's getting overtime to. Go mow them, and I've I have gotten calls on that before. I've visited with you about it a little bit, so that would kind of help maybe alleviate some of that.
So we're we're tossing around ideas like that, can? Can we do it better and differently and can we utilize uh these employees to make our town look a lot better and then too? Uh, this year, we didn't. Partner up with community probation just because. There was a lot of weird nuances. Can we partner with them to where? We can have designated times and months to where we work with those folks and say, okay. This Saturday or or this day, we're gonna be out doing this. You need community service hours, this is where you need to report, this is what we're gonna do. And we get it done. I'm all more about forgiveness in some aspects of cleaning some right away areas and have text dot or. The railroad say, hey. You got too close to our tracks. Well, sorry, we we need to get those weeds out of the way. We need to clean. These concrete drainage ditches over by Walmart. I mean, there's there, we we could grow a.
There are things growing in there.
And and I've seen people run across that road and hit that mud and just go slide. That is a safety aspect as well. We don't need somebody getting hurt, but. So again, that's something we're looking at to see, can we do that? Uh, if. We go with these wireless meters and we have a couple of employees or two positions that are open. Would that be a better place? To utilize them to do those little things. To make life a little bit easier.
Those little things add up.
They do.
My, oh my gosh, yes.
Well, I'm thinking outside the box and and not something that's gonna be so. Costly, you know, that we're gonna maybe absorb some of those other positions. Take that same fund and.
Well, then that's one thing, when they look at those meters, they go, well, cost savings, you may not need these two positions. And yeah, we could say that's a cost saving. But I think there's other places we could use those positions that can help us. Um, and again, we contract out a bunch of stuff and. Not sure it'll save us any by doing it, but I think it. Can help us. Take care of stuff more quickly, but also help us in other arenas.
I sure don't think it's gonna cost us anymore, whether it's.
It shouldn't.
They could be multi-purpose employees too.
Yeah.
And hopefully it's not trying to cure it.
Let anybody go. We're not trying to get anybody to lose their jobs.
I mean, we might have an initial. Uptick a little in cost at first when we're having to buy tools or equipment or things like that that we need to do, but. Um, we should be able to. Tackle some things and 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 move forward, but. It's just frustrating when when you're, and I'm not picking on text thought or other, but just. You see that and you're like, come on, you not get this done. Well, you can't go out and pull the weed because you're in the right away. Really? So. That big bush isn't any more of a safety problem.
Right, it's.
Some of those. Yeah.
That entity's not. Whatever entity it is.
And and it's people too, because some folks go, you know, that's in the right away. It's not mine. And it's like, and you got one person that takes care of their right of way out to the pavement and then the next one does it. Not that I want to inherit a bunch of work, but I'm just trying to. Help us help people take care of their stuff. Maybe we can create partnerships where if they see us, they come out there and join us and and clean up. I don't know, but that's one thing we're looking.
Well, it's finding a problem and trying to find a solution and not just going, it's it's not you, it's not, it's not your fault, it's not my fault.
Well, can I touch that into it?
They'll set us apart.
Yeah.
Yeah, the questions on. There it looks like she beat up hers.
Preacher have had it.
I think I've, yeah, it's been a month on it. Mine's in my car and it's probably been stepped on a hundred times. I know it's in there, I saw it.
So Thursday, um. Hopefully, well, just to power one up, that correct? Maybe Mr. Ledesma, he may come back, he may not. He may like San Antonio so much, he may stay there. But Thursday, we will. Present one, three and six. And um, and then Monday night, we'll look at. Um, our calendar as far as some additional dates, so y'all can get comfortable. With the whole budget and everything. We're not adopting our. Tax rate and budget until September sixteen.
Sound right.
Sounds right.
So. We've got time to work through this. The biggest thing is understanding what our tax rate is. Um, so then we can call the public hearing for that and then the rest of it is just kind of working through. Um, the nuances of the budget so that we're all comfortable and there may be some things that. Um, when we get to do a retreat, we can kind of defer some of those to that and figure out how. Uh, how we're gonna do them and the priority of them. Because I think the most important thing, and y'all have heard me say that we can't do everything at one time, but we do need to develop. Plan on how we're gonna go forward. County today approved the uh. Send in the letter to. Text out aviation to do the airport layout plan, so that's good. And they also approved the uh. Uh, steel project out here, so we'll have both of those moving forward shortly. Any else you gotta add, sir?
No, just on the general fund, uh, we talk about property taxes and stuff like that and. Just we gave you, you were talking about the. The differences and all that, but no new revenue, uh, the de minimis and and a no. Proval rate. Well. Purposes of this budget, since we haven't calculated our tax rate, it's gonna be the same revenue as we booked it last year. So three, three point four eight five million. So when you look at that, just to be aware that that's not been adjusted for any of these tax calculations whenever represented on Thursday. So just a heads up on that.
Tax rate's always confusing. And and again, I know everybody's concerned about it and and I don't believe in raising taxes just to raise them, but. You know. They tie our hands. When you, when your values are going up, they don't give you the ability to take advantage of that, to take care of things in your town or make your town. Look better and that and that's what's frustrating because. You want your values to go up because that means your community is doing well.
Absolutely. So do the values going up cost our citizens more?
Depends on what the tax rate set out.
So that's why I was telling you need a. Because.
Five point six per, five point six six percent valuation now. So it's it's up. So that means that with the same tax rate that you have, you're gonna possibly have five point six more. But when we get the tax rate, we calculate, that's what all the worksheet does. It calculates all that information and see what it's gonna, no new revenue rate, which is gonna stay and it may. May lower the tax rate, but it's not gonna stop revenue, does that make sense? Because of the valuation, so.
I am not a map. I just want to know.
Difficult.
I don't get any of this.
It to be clear.
The sum is last year diminished was more than the the. The vote approval, yeah, yes, that's that's a weird.
What people see is when their valuations go up, they automatically assume my taxes are going up. And actually. When their valuations go up, usually their their. Tax rate may go down, but they still may be paying the same amount because there's a weird formula that kind of tries to balance that out. But again. It sometimes works against. The governmental entity because you're counting on that value to say, okay, it's going up. Can we capture a piece of that for a little bit of extra revenue? So we can do this project. And.
And the values going up, there's multiple things there. There's our homes that are existing that went up. There's also new value. So, you know, slim chickens is is new value. Yes, there was something there before it, but say if there was a blank piece of property and something was built there, there's new value.
Those are.
Yes. Yes, that's, that's what you want. You want new, that's the truest, most. You know. Positive to your.
Also see wide. It's not, it's an accumulation of all the appraised values, not just one area or one different thing, so it it's it. There's a lot to it.
It's, and it's not easy and it's it's not meant to be easy. I don't think they made it. Simple.
It was understandable at one time, but now after their great wisdom, it is beyond complicated and it it's hard to explain. To the citizen. Of why it is what it is. And they use these weird terms that don't make any more sense, so.
Yeah.
Um, they try to change, you know, to make more sense.
Yeah, and then it confused everyone.
Yes. So. And. Is that uh, property taxes, of course, do help fund the general fund. It also helps fund the cemetery fund. And of course, our debt fund. So there's two different, three different things that the property tax has to pay for, so.
The people in the cemetery pay taxes?
No, we pay to maintain to keep.
That's a new concept.
But that's why one, three are very important. And of course, six. It's coming to you on Thursday, and those are the three most important funds, what I would say. What's fund four? Fund four is a internal financing fund. Capital improvement fund, it depends on what you want to call. What N code calls it, it's capital improvement fund. What's it? We'll we'll find it later. What's our balance there? We'll look at it.
Well, I love it. You have any questions from the media, sir, since you're?
I'm. I'm winging it as always when it comes to budget season. And the reason why I'm writing.
Anything else? Anybody? I'm not trying to rush anybody. Anything else?
Amy.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned.